One second and we'll be able to start.
Give me a signal, thank you.
Mayor, you're free to proceed.
It is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. Welcome, this is the virtual special meeting of the Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 3:00 PM. Thank you. Like to make a roll call. Commissioner Jay Legree.
Present.
Commissioner Susan Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Richard Byrne.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett. Commissioner Ed Stranowski.
Here.
Commissioner Pat Caluzzi.
Here.
And I'm Mayor Stan Mills. We have a full complement, we have a quorum, and we were able to formally conduct business today. I'd also like to recognize that in the room with me today is City Solicitor Glenn Man Dallas, and also City Manager Sharon Lynn. Not pictured is Chief Banks and Kevin Williams. Thank you very much. And Evan Miller's here also. Thank you for coming here. Would like to make note that today, we normally have a special meeting, contains an agenda portion on the COVID crisis pandemic, and that was delayed until a future time to be determined to allow city staff to do measurements and help further develop outside dining parameters post pandemic. Would like to remind everybody that if you check out our city website, cityofrehoboth.com, you'll find an excellent link to all the Delaware COVID information, compliments of our communication specialist, Chris Johnson. And by the way, it will have on there where future COVID testing sites are. We had a very successful one in the parking lot of City Hall yesterday that was very crowded and well attended, so keep an eye out for that. I would like to welcome all those members of the public that are watching today and to our participants. As you know, you have to register ahead of time to be able to talk during our meetings. And today, we have registered Carol Everhart of the Rehoboth Beach Dewey Beach Chamber of Commerce, Walter Brittingham, citizen in town, Gary Glass, citizen in town, also Robert Whittsall, attending today via phone. Thank you all for attending. With that, would like to remind everybody that the only bit of correspondence I recall getting is a duplicate letter from Citizen Gary Glass on the topic of the charter change. With that, we'll go to the purpose of the special meeting is twofold. One is to discuss water rates, and one is to discuss the charter. We'll start off first with discussing amending the water rates for Dewey Beach, and I'll turn the meeting over to City Manager Sharon Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a update, a change, if you will, for water rates, and the terms of the agreement are spelled out. This was last done in February of 2016 between the City of Rehoboth Beach and Sussex County in relation to the Dewey Beach Water District. There's been much negotiation between the City and Sussex County, and I will turn it over to the Director of Public Works and explain.
Thank you, Sharon. This is an update on a proposed amendment to the agreement we have with Sussex County with respect to providing bulk sale of water to Dewey's behalf. So as Sharon said, our current agreement was dated February of 2016 for bulk water sale to the county, so much different than, you know, a complete distribution system. So it's just bulk water sale to the county for Dewey, and it actually expired at the end of last month. It was a five-year agreement. Since this fall, we've been negotiating with the county on determining what a new rate should be, but we've gotten to an agreement, at least between the staffs, that this is an appropriate term. So we negotiated a new amendment to this agreement with the county, capturing only the expenditures that really pertain to providing Dewey water. There's some things that we do for folks outside of town, plus for our own residents that have no impact on providing water to Dewey. So we cleaned that out as best we could, came up with what we think it costs us, you know, to provide water to Dewey from that rate. We proposed again a five-year term. We felt that was a reasonable term, similar to the last agreement, and this time, we're going to recommend a single rate where we took the cost of providing water to Dewey on each of the next five years, and then just took the average of that, and we hit that same fee, same rate for each of the next five years. Just to note that the amendment is being worked in kind of parallel processes. The county is also taking it to their county council today to try to get agreement from the council on what we've come up to at this point. This, from the spreadsheet that I think Bert provided everyone on the call, that you can kind of see, this is kind of his summary at the end of his spreadsheet. So you can kind of see the existing rate structure as it existed from 2016 through 2020, and you'll recall that they had a surcharge for providing water to Dewey in the period, similar to what we charge for the in-town and out-of-town residents, other residents that we serve. So the calculations that we've done that come up with the cost of providing water to Dewey for each of the next five years is as you can see, and we took the average of that and came up with $5.05 per thousand gallon. Just to show you exactly what is changing on the agreement, the current agreement. First is a deletion of paragraph three, which basically just set the old term at 2016 to 2020, and replacing it with the new term of January 1st, December 31st, 2025. And then in paragraph five was the old rate structure, so that's deleted in its entirety and a simple sentence outlining the new rate structure, new rate of $5.05 per thousand gallon. The other thing deleted was the old rate schedule that used to be attached to the agreement, and that's just coming in. So really, just three, two paragraphs deleted, one table deleted, and we've just added in a new term and a new rate. All of the other provisions remain intact, you know, water quality, water quantities, pressures, those kind of things, all of those remain the same, really just an update to the rate. So the action we're requesting at this point is just that the board consider at the next board meeting to approve the amendment to the existing agreement with the county to provide a new rate of $5.05 per thousand gallons for providing water to the county on Dewey Beach's behalf.
Thank you, Kevin. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? I will preface this with saying, you know, at our meeting on Friday, January 15th, one of the agenda topics is consideration of adoption of this. There's less than the normal amount of time of notice for this. I'm hopeful you feel comfortable voting on it Friday, and if not, certainly let me know. Commissioner Jay Legree, you have your hand up, and then Patrick, and then Commissioner Caluzzi.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're fine. Thank you, Commissioner.
Kevin, we have, we expected 1.15 for revenue this year on the Dewey Beach water sales. How many gallons did we calculate for that 1.15 million? Do you remember?
I don't have that offhand there, Commissioner. We can certainly get that, what we used for the calculation last year.
You may know off the top of your head, the maximum annual is 310 million, which would come to 1.56 at $5.05,000. Do, have they been hitting that number? How close have they been? Does that help you?
Again, I don't have a quantity numbers at my fingertips, but I can certainly get that. I mean, we have it easy enough.
Okay. I noticed there was a huge jump in expected revenue. We went from about $600,000 gallons to, excuse me, I'm sorry, about $600,000 to 1.15, and I'm assuming that was the smoothing. Did you, did you use this number when you calculated those revenues?
I'm sure he did. I don't, I don't know that for sure, but I'm sure he did. But as you can see, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty substantial increase to them, as we put on our own customer, other customers, you know, earlier in this year. We just waited till the end of this agreement to inflict some of that pain on our bulk customers as well.
I, I hear you, and I think you did a great job, and I'm ready to go forward with it. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gossett?
Yes, thank you very much for this. On the 505 averaging cost, what are the factors that figure in to come up with that? Is that labor overhead? I'm just curious, what elements did you utilize to come up with that average cost?
He started with, pretty much like you see in the budget preparation, so all of those individual lines that go into the preparation of the water department's budget, labor, all the overhead things, water system repairs that apply to Dewey, and all of those go into that calculation of the annual charge for, you know, each year, based upon what we have projected for all of those categories that are applicable to Dewey. Obviously, there are some that are not, but most are, so all those get rolled into that calculation.
And those, going forward in five years, are just a percentage increase based on history of escalation?
Correct. For most of the operational costs, yes. For the, for the capital cost, we actually took our five-year CIP, made that as accurate as we could, and captured those actual costs. I'm sorry, they're still projected costs, but for actual projects that we know are coming down the road.
And do you foresee anything that could affect that in a major way that would impact Dewey alone, but not the rest of the system?
It would only be, I think, you know, a major break on one of the connection points that we would have with them. They, obviously, they're managing, or the county's managing their own distribution system, which is where a lot of those kind of problems could and would arise. That wouldn't necessarily impact on our ability or what we're able to provide for them, you know, in bulk.
And do we supply Dewey with redundant mains, or is there just one main?
We have a couple of connections. One is very undersized, so we're looking at, I know the county is very interested in upsizing that one that runs through the area, that piece of ground between the ocean and Silver Lake. In fact, they're doing some survey work out there now because of the fire protection issues out in that area. So I know that they're pursuing that, and if they make that commitment, then we would certainly want to tie that into them, you know, to make that a loop as well. So that would, that would be a big benefit for all of us, and we're hopefully in a move forward with their plan.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pat Caluzzi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just, I was just looking, I was looking at the agreement earlier, and I might have missed it, but is the term five years? Is that somewhere in the agreement?
I think it spells out, you know, a to and from, which is January 1st, 2021 to December 30th, 2025, I think. So it's five calendar years. I don't know, I'd have to look and see if it says five years.
That's fine, as long as it's in there somewhere, I just missed it, and so I just want to ensure that it's there. I've seen it on my city solicitor.
Yeah, it specifies the actual dates.
Okay.
Commissioner, if you look on the Amendment to Water Agreement, item number, first page, item number two, the fourth sentence, it does articulate January 1, 20, whoops.
It's, that's big.
January 21, 2020, terminating 2025.
It's actually 2021.
Thank you. That was really only, you know, I was concerned about.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Stranowski, you're muted.
There you go. Thank you, thank you. Kevin, thank you for doing such a good job. You did mention that capital improvements are included in the rate calculation over the next five years, but what about debt service over the next five years? Is that also inclusive in, in the cost that is calculated?
Yes, Commissioner, it is, and, you know, once we had the Lynchwell complex, some of our old infrastructure updates that we did finance are part of rates, the rate determiner.
Sounds good. I, I think it's, we can move forward on it.
Thank you. Commissioner Gay?
I just had a couple of little questions. First of all, the Dewey Beach District, is that, it sounds like it's more than just the city limits, right? Is it, does it encompass a larger area than just the city limits of Dewey?
You know, I'm not really sure, Commissioner, what the exact boundaries are for that, what they call their water district.
Okay. And secondly...
I can certainly get that as well.
I wondered if it included the area between here and there, you know. The other thing too, let's see, or do, do the people there know, well, first of all, this is a bulk rate, is it the same as what the county charges the customer, or does the county then charge the customer even more?
Well, they use a, they use a flat rate, you know, rate for their, because they don't, they're not metered in Dewey. So the county divvies up the usage or the volume they would provide, and somehow divide it by the number of people out there and come up with a number to charge them, similar to what they do a lot of places with the sewer, but it's not based on metered water.
Thank you. And so we're, we're left with a few questions unanswered from Commissioner Legree and Commissioner Gay, that Kevin, if you could provide those for Friday meeting, we'd appreciate it. If there's no more questions from the Commissioners, I want to go to the members of the public. We've got, again, we've got four members, we'll go in order. Carol Everhart.
Carol isn't on the call.
Carol's not on. Walter Brittingham?
Thank you for the report, and no comment.
Thank you, Walter. Gary Glass?
No comment.
Thank you. And Robert Whittsall?
Not on the call.
All right. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mayor, very much. If there's no more questions from the Commissioners, then, then this will again be on Friday's agenda for consideration of a vote. Commissioner Legree, you have additional comment?
Just a comment for Susan. I own property in Forgotten Mile, and I pay water to Dewey, or the county, so they go outside the city limits for a ways.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very good. So again, we'll be considering this at the meeting on Friday. Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to go to the second item of business in this special meeting, and that is to discuss proposed charter amendments of Section 17, City Manager, and Section 21, Police Force, including clarifying that the City Manager may delegate supervisory authority over city employees and city departments, including the Beach Patrol Captain and the Beach Patrol. First one I'd like to do is start with a brief review of the processes to change or enact city ordinances in the city charter. City ordinances are created and amended by votes of the mayor and Commissioners. Sometimes, as you know, they're accompanied by public hearings when required, but not always if they're not required. Charter changes, on the other hand, or new content in the charter, requires a state legislator to sponsor and ultimately requires consideration at the state level. Consideration of a charter change is and should be weightier than an amendment to a city ordinance, and so we need obviously sufficient conversation about the proposed changes to the city charter. I would like to remind everybody that when this topic was first introduced, three things happened or came out of that meeting. Number one, we were only initially focused on amending charter language to clarify who has oversight of the Beach Patrol. Number two, we asked for more time to do some more research to find out how other cities authorize oversight of the Beach Patrol. And so I'm hoping that anybody that did research will share that with us today. And if you recall, in Gary Glass's letter to us, he indicated that he knew of some cities that originally had the City Manager oversee the Beach Patrol, and it was changed to the Police Department, and then it was changed back to, or just the opposite. So I apologize. So hopefully Gary's letter was reembedded in this agenda, if not, then see one of the previous agendas. Gary, maybe you can give us some examples. You know where I was headed with that. Well, with that, the third thing that came out of that meeting was that Commissioner Gossett pointed out that other charter changes to the same sections of the charter were needed, and were likely best to be considered as a package. So with that, I'll turn the floor to Commissioner Gossett, as he captured in the support document embedded in today's agenda, a package of charter changes relative to the Beach Patrol. Commissioner Gossett?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to go through, I think all of you have the copy of the proposed changes. Highlighted, just underlined and in blue are insertions, and deletions are strike-throughs and in red. And the, at the end of the document also is highlighted, the line numbers specifically correlating to the proposed change and the reasoning behind it. Initially, I go through with the baseline of this aspect is to just kind of bring into the charter, the last update of this charter was 1983, which is about 37 years ago, and, you know, operations were different at that time, not only within the country, but within the city of Rehoboth Beach. So majority of these changes that I proposed here are just bringing up to today how we are currently doing business in the city, and to match the charter to actually how we are managing and organizing the city today. The first lines there, of lines four and five, that was what brought the initial change to the charter, so we can come back to that in a minute, but just going down the line a little bit, bringing some specifics into line, if we make the first change about the change of City Manager overseeing, or Chief of Police overseeing, that replaces the Commissioners' names or Commissioner delegation to City Manager. Also finding about the lines 14 and 15, they're pass a test suitably equal to a test required of a senior lifesaver by the American Red Cross. But the American Red Cross no longer offers a senior lifesaver certificate. They do offer a lifeguard course or certification in life safety survival. So again, just a, to meet what the American Red Cross offers today, but also keeping there the phrase of pass a test substantially equal to that required to obtain such certifications. Obviously, all of our lifeguards need to be certified in life safety, and American Red Cross is certainly the organization that primarily does that throughout the United States. Going on down a little bit, line 21, well, I go back to line 18 and 19 about compensation. Going back and reading Minute Books back early on from, jumped back at least to 1982 and 1983, when this charter change was proposed, and unfortunately, there's really not a lot of detail in there, other than the fact that they talked about doing this, and a change should be talked about. The, one of, I'll just share with you one of the comments in here. It says, this was from the December 10th, 1982 meeting. The first statement concerns itself, and this is specifically to the charter change that's in the charter right now. The First Amendment concerns itself with the Police Department. It came about because of a problem with the police we're having. The charter defines them as having all the powers of a constable, period. So really, I don't think we can take anything from that, other than there was discussion about it. The other lines comes up about lines 22, 23, and 24, and I'm sure we'll let the chief kind of highlight this a little bit more. In such cases as each member of the Beach Patrol shall have, shall be vested with all the authority of a member of the Police Force. Today, understanding, and Chief, you can highlight this also in conversation with you, but there's the Council of Police Training, which is the organization that mandates training for the police, and the qualifications for a police officer for enforcement purposes versus, in 1983 versus today are quite different. So this is just bringing it up to code, so that, you know, current practice, if you will, you really can't have a Beach Patrol lifeguard acting as a fully vested police officer. And that also is lines 31 and 32, which were also the same aspects of, with all the authority. And then lines 27, 28, and 29, when there is just, again, bringing it up to a little more current language, cleaning it up a little bit, just saying that the Beach Patrol shall restrain or suppress careless, dangerous, or unseemly conduct. We said to bathers and swimmers, we changed it to individuals. Obviously, you can be just laying on the beach or not a bather or swimmer technically, so individuals along the beachfront of a city. And taking that words, the phrase shall retain and suppress unseemly conduct, remove that and incorporate into that earlier sentence. So basically, that's the cleanup aspect of the area that I would like to bring forward. And Chief, if you would like to, or anyone else have questions, but Chief, if you could just expand a little bit that on the COPT about training and mandated training.
Hi, yes, good afternoon, everyone. Commissioner Patrick Gossett summed it up pretty well. The Council on Police Training authorizes what you can and cannot do, and there's no possibly legal way we could even under emergency give the same powers as a police officer to our lifeguards. As in today's climate, they have to have certain training with certain equipment and to even be considered under that. That is outdated. Now, with that being said, they would be like any other citizen on the street, if we instructed them to detain someone, they could restrain that person temporarily at discretion of a police officer, but that's the same as any civilian personnel. But we could not tell them, you know, they can make an arrest, they can do that. Now, with that, there's some caveat. You could, under civil ordinances, give them the powers to deputize them through our, the city charter, somewhat like what we did with building and license, and for just some beach regulations if they wanted to give citations out. For example, my understanding in Dewey Beach, they are doing that currently, where the lifeguards can give citations out, such as their town ordinance, smoking, dangerous activities, things like that. Again, I'm not sure we want to go there, but we can't deputize them or authorize them to go much further than that under the law.
Thank you, Chief. And kind of just to go back now with regards to administration, I think, you know, what are we trying to accomplish here today? And I'm thinking that, you know, it's how can we best administer the public safety functions of the city, as to where policing and Beach Patrol really come in under public safety aspects of it. And I think, kind of coming back to the 50,000-foot level here, looking at it, you know, the city operates under a council-manager form of government, where we as elected officials have the policymaking, we make the policy of the city, and the day-to-day operation of the city is handled by the Chief Executive Officer or the City Manager. So that is the form of government that the City of Rehoboth Beach operates under. So it's our role as the Commissioners to make the policies, if you will, and ordinances, but it's the City Manager's role to really implement those and enforce those and administer the city. They, they're in charge of the budget, recruiting, hiring, terminating, and supervising the city staff. That's their primary role as City Manager, is in the form of government of council-manager form of government, which we operate under. So I think in trying to, again, bring this charter up to date of, since it was last, this particular section was last updated 38 years ago, you know, a lot of, a lot of things have changed in the city, and those responsibilities have changed also. The city's grown, our employee staff has grown, you know, we've created a Department of Public Works, so now the Water Department, the... Um, you know, we've created a Department of Public Works, so now the water department, the sewer department and the streets department all, all report to one individual. That was not the case in previous years. We have a communication specialist, uh, we have a grants administrator. We have a full-time finance director, again, that has many reports directly to the finance director, which use all individually report to the city manager. So we have made those changes in the past few years. Um, one of the policy aspects that the city uh, elected officials have taken upon themselves in the past few years, you know, I was behind this, certainly a champion of this, was our compensation policy, which again, gave the um, opportunity for the city manager, the uh, tools to better administer their uh, compensation and rate packages of, of pay scales and pay rates to be competitive in the city. Um, so I think, you know, to keep those things in mind and in trying to how, to look forward of how we manage the city and how we um, administer current day versus nineteen eighty-three. You know, and, and also, other changes have been made in the, in the management of the city and, and enforcement has been, chief had mentioned. In nineteen eighty-three, there certainly were no open container laws on the beach. There was not a smoking ban on the beach. There was not a canopy ban on the beach. So these are also public safety issues that have come into the forefront between today and, and nineteen eighty-three, when this language was lit, written. Talking to the chief and talking to some other staff members, um, that, you know, if a beach patrol or, or lifeguard approaches someone that's smoking or drinking or has a canopy up, they approach them and say, you know, the law states, et cetera, et cetera. And if they comply immediately and, you know, throw away the beverage or put out the cigarette or take the canopy down, all's well and good. But if they give them some pushback, the first response is that the beach patrol will call the, the um, police department to have them come down and to uh, handle the situation. So it just kind of how things have changed over the years and just looking at how the administration of this particular chapter, I just think needs investigation as, as we go forward. Um, you know, this is the, the administrative responsibility for the public safety function of our city should be under uh, one manager. And I think that is apparent with regards to uh, public safety, which is headed by the chief of police. Um, you know, and, and looking back also in nineteen eighty-three, and I started reading these minute books and they, you kind of go down a rabbit hole, to be honest with you. But um, in, let's see, I'm gonna check here, nineteen um, eighty-three, we had twenty members of the beach patrol. Today, we have at least seventy, if, if not more. Um, and one of the other interesting things I found in the, the minute books, just as a, a sideline of how things have changed in um, nineteen forty-six, December of forty-six, we had seventeen lifeguards. And the challenge or the, the uh, discussion within the mayor and commissioners in nineteen forty-six was to increase the pay rate from twenty-five dollars a week to thirty-five dollars a week. And this was again in nineteen forty-six, when we had seventeen uh, beach patrol members at, at that time. So I just wanted to kind of give you a scope of, of how I approach, of what this, what this change needs to, why this change needs to happen. And I really think the administrative responsibility for the public service um, aspect of our community needs to lie under one individual. And that is public, public safety is the chief of police. Uh, much as we've done with the Board of Public Work or um, Department of Public Works, um, the Finance Department, again, a department leader and then the other folks uh, coming within there. Now, as my understanding is that the lifeguards themselves, there is no difference in reporting. The beach patrol captain will still administer all of the beach patrol uh, lifeguards. Um, their overseeing of their scheduling, overseeing of their life safety certifications, et cetera. Um, this is more of the administrative work of uh, payroll, um, interviewing today. Again, interviewing of a lifeguard in nineteen eighty-three versus today, they're much more stringent with HR qualifications, drug testing, background checks, et cetera. And this is something that the police department obviously is, is very familiar with. It's a managed for all of our uh, hiring that goes on within the city. So again, just, just, I know that's a lot of information, but again, this is the reasoning behind my thoughts and processes of trying to make these changes to this portion of the, the charter. And I'd just like to also point out that this particular portion that regard or talks about beach patrol does fall under, uh, in the charter, under the heading of police force. So that again, is where this all originates from. So um, that's again, my rationalization for my additional changes is, is to incorporate and update our charter at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I also want to thank you for uh, taking the time to uh, combine both uh, your comments and edits uh, as well as uh, Glenn Mandalas's into one document. Uh, obviously, uh, uh, the changes uh, address the oversight of the beach patrol or, or employees uh, directly, uh, as well as uh, presenting other uh, proposed changes. So I would suggest that uh, under discussion, uh, if you can, please reference the line numbers so we can follow what your uh, might be uh, addressing uh, in your conversation. With that, that will start with Commissioner Kalusi.
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, I just want to say that um, thank you to Commissioner Gossett and uh, the city solicitor Glenn Mandalas. I think you did an excellent job on this and I totally agree that public safety uh, falls under uh, the chief of police. And I think that these changes uh, make a lot of sense. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? My expectation would, uh, Commissioner Legree?
Yeah, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're fine. Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, I'm really troubled that we are, that we are changing the charter without a compelling reason to change it. I'm not sure we know even why uh, it was written the way it was. Whoever wrote that charter the way it was took a lot of work to do it. They have the last seven paragraphs concerned the beach patrol. And I don't see a compelling reason to change it. We have a director of public safety. It's the city manager. She oversees safety of the, of the streets, the sidewalks, and she oversees safety of our beach. And the beach patrol is a big organization. There is, there is a lot of administrative work that goes on there. And there's a, a, a spree decor that exists with the beach patrol that is part of our brand. And I think what Patrick did is great. He cleaned up and, and did all of the, the procedural changes that absolutely needed to be made. And I applaud him for that. Uh, taking, taking the beach patrol and putting them under the chief of police is, is just adding a lot of work to a plate that's already full. And uh, I would much rather we would have uh, assigned a liaison person to the, to the beach patrol to do their administrative work, prepare the budget, to do payroll, to do all the things that, all the administrative things that I think we were having problems with. Uh, the, the beast patrol, the lifeguards save lives. They save lives. They keep order on the beach. They keep their eyes open for trouble. Kids love them. They play by the, by the chairs. They, the lifeguards are the ambassadors from Rehoboth Beach to the public. And that has grown tremendously in the one hundred years that the beach patrol has been operating. And I think one hundred years they've operated really well. Yeah, it's changed a lot. It's changed a lot. There are a lot of problems with, with pay, although we pay, we pay very well. We pay competitive wages. But, but the, the kids on the beach patrol have to have second jobs. It's so, so expensive to live in town. Uh, we've lowered, we've lowered the age down, I think to sixteen. And, and that's tough. Back in, when, back it was, was going back through the eighty-three, the, the old records, lifeguards came back year after year after year. And those folks knew what was going on. They were experienced. They could handle problems that came up. They could take care of folks who mouthed off to them. And, and they kept order really well. The, the police don't concern themselves with ocean rescue. They don't concern themselves with training. We got to remember that the lifeguards are athletes. They really are athletes. If you've ever, I spend a lot of time on the beach in the summer. I hope that all of us spend a lot of time too. But I, but I'm, I'm able to, to see the lifeguards. They're, they're spirited. They do just well and, and they, and they do a good job. And when they need help, the police is there and it comes, they come pretty fast. Uh, chief, could I ask chief a question, uh, uh, mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief, how are you going to administrate this? I, I know you, you, you have so much work that, plus goodness sakes, you got four more years looking at you. How are you going to administrate it? Are you gonna, you, you can't possibly do that all yourself. You're gonna have to assign someone else to, or maybe I'm wrong. Tell me how you're gonna do it.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, may, we made out, I asked you, everybody done it this way. The reality is, and I, I want to make sure everybody understands this, is that my ideal i- is the captain will still be the captain and be hiring and be in charge. You know, obviously, as you mentioned, and um, he, he knows riptides, he knows the water, they're, they're athletes. Mine is a, a support role as well as just to see, to help out, out in, uh, on anything he or she, the new captain may need. And also, um, it's working together, but at the same time would fall under our emergency operations plan. Not for a water rescue, but if some other things came in about. And I think we could have a better um, communication and um, line by me being in charge. Again, it never was the intention of the city manager or myself to take away a, um, what they're doing every day. They will go out and train the lifeguards. They will hire the lifeguards. Mine is to assist um, H, HR wise, um, to make sure the paperwork's coming in correctly, what we need. Make sure backgrounds are done, make sure uh, any um, drug testing and alcohol testing are done, done. Uh, we have um, random testing here in Rehoboth Beach to make sure that's organized. And also, it's really um, working together, but it's more with the HR. No, there was never an intention to take away uh, what the lifeguards would be. You're absolutely right. The um, the visitors love them. They know their job. They're professionals. And all, it is just um, in my research, and um, that maybe a question comes up later. Um, a, a lot of towns, Delaware's a little bit u- unique, but um, it, for Ocean City or uh, Maryland, Virginia, even down Outer Banks, um, looking, most lifeguards fall under um, public safety. And it will be their Department of Emergency Services, Fire and Rescue, or um, fire, um, police departments is from my research, and I can go into towns that I researched it, if you need to know that. But um, Delaware, it's a mixed bag. Some are reporting to the city manager and others to the police department. Um, so it kind of goes back and forth um, with that, add in Delaware. And the state parks of, i- is the police too. So it, it is a mixed bag in, in Delaware. Um, but mostly outside of Delaware, it falls under emergency service. As I said, some will say it's uh, fire and rescue services. They call it different names. Um, so those are bigger agencies and bigger counties and stuff that oversee. But again, uh, that, that's how it would be administered. Um, quite honestly, it all goes um, at the beginning of the season, uh, for us is when I'm busy, as far as with the A, HR. But I'm doing that with my seasonal officer, so it's just a phone call. Once, once the captain, how it would happen is, once the captain hi- hired someone, he'd send me email with their information and I'd reach out to them, make sure they had the packet that needs to be filled out for the city HR. So they're just emailing that back to me. I make sure it's complete. I bring them, set an appointment for them to come in for uh, what we need, their driver's life, social security, things like that. And, and we move fo- forward. And then after, and then I get, do the background and all that. And I give the green light to the captain and the captain can put them on the schedule. Again, it is their show. It is just really fine tuning it. Um, it, you know, and if they have a problem, they have a question, they can come to me and I can take it to the city manager, which as we all know is very busy and all. So it's just kind of streamline it, quite honestly.
Chief, can you name a, a town or two in, in uh, Delaware that does uh, have the police overseeing the beach patrol?
Yeah, um, again, I said Delaware Seashore State Parks falls uh, under um, parks, um, under the police department. Um, currently Lewis PD is under the police. Um, Bethany Beach used to be under the uh, um, police until they, they did not replace a um, certain higher level officer. So then the city manager took that back, back. And um, again, South Bethany, um, it, it falls under um, the city manager. But after talking with the, with other officials down there, that really is the um, police department that's handling it and kind of overseeing the daily um, routine and things like that and backgrounds and hiring. So it is a mixed bag in, in Delaware, as I said, but private, and um, Dewey Beach, uh, it's kind of same thing as South Bethany. The city manager oversees it, but talked to the police chief this morning. They um, have a great working relationship and they train them, because they actually make um, do some civil citations, I, I guess, and to the city charter. So therefore, the um, police chief is involved in their training and going, and all that. So uh, he said it's kind of, you know, the city manager oversees it, but they contact the city, uh, the police chief if there's things they need and going on. So it's kind of in name only, maybe. Again, I don't want to speak for Dew- Dewey Beach. But um, as far as um, o- other states, it definitely falls under public safety and um, fire and rescue and emergency services. And um, the ones that have smaller departments, um, will go into um, wild, um, to the police. For example, Wildwood, New Jersey goes under fire department, but North Wildwood goes to the police because they only have a very few guards. So that sometimes um, goes on the size of the guards where it falls under.
Thank you, chief. Uh, any more questions?
After else is asked. Go ahead. Go to Dick and Susan.
Uh, Commissioner Byrne is next, and then Commissioner Gay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I really appreciate the, the whole work that Commissioner Gossett has done on this issue, both in the, in uh, working with the solicitor to draft it and then do, doing, doing the research and digging kind of deep and commenting on all of the change over the years and uh, why we need to be flexible and look at uh, changing opportunities. Um, the fact that uh, um, the draft that, that we're looking at gives um, the flexibility to the city manager, um, makes very good sense to me that, that, that the city manager may freely delegate supervisory authority in his or her direction. Um, uh, um, just makes very good sense. So Commissioner Gossett's comments were very helpful to, to, to helping me think more clearly about this issue. Um, the chief's comments uh, were very helpful. I, I appreciate um, Jay, Jay's question because I think that is a key question on how the chief will administer this. Um, I do agree that um, the, the best way to administer public safety is to put it under the chief of police. And uh, this isn't dependent on, on the personalities or the people that are in these positions. I feel that it's quite as good, good policy right now in this um, day, day and time. Um, so I, um, I support this draft. Um, I, and I think that the timing to make this change is very good now that we're between captains. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, first of all, I want to echo what others have said about the, the amount of work that Commissioner Gossett put into this. It's very uh, educational for all of us to he- to hear the history. And it's also, um, it was eye-opening just, just how many elements have changed over the years and therefore, you know, needed updating. So there's no question um, that this is needed. And in terms of the reporting relationship, I, I wrote down some things as um, uh, as Commissioner Legree was, was talking about the esprit de corps and about uh, them serving as ambassadors and about them returning year after year. And I, you know, so I really appreciated what the chief had to say there because the sense I have and certainly my goal would be that, I mean, it, the day-to-day doesn't change for the lifeguards, is from what I hear. And that's for the lifeguards, is from what I hear, and that's as it should be. So that they are serving as ambassadors for the city, they are, you know, doing their, their athletic activities, they are the life-saving goal, and they're, and the day-to-day is no different from what it was, you know, last year, two years ago. So, you know, I'm comfortable with that, and I think that these are timely changes. So I support them. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Gay. We'll go to the public in a few minutes, but first, Commissioner Legree?
Chief, I have one last question. Do you anticipate putting either one of your lieutenants in charge of the captain of the Beach Patrol?
Currently, the application process is open. We've started some interviews, so if they would submit an application, they certainly would be looked at. The city manager and I and Evan are all, take.
I'm glad you put Evan in there. Oh, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand your question. Could you repeat that, please?
Do you anticipate putting either one of your lieutenants, Jamie, either one of your lieutenants in charge of the Beach Patrol captain, or overseeing the Beach Patrol captain?
Not, not at all. Oh, again, the captain will be the one in charge of Beach Patrol. Oh, I'll just be the one kind of behind the scenes, sitting there helping it out, and if something came up, it would be, be me to go to them and have the direct contact and all that. And again, you know, the lifeguards that come back year to year, and the general public would not see any different, just like when it was the city manager, or if she decided to take it back, if you guys should make this change. You know, the captain would still be the captain or whatever. So no, it would fall to me. I would not delegate that part of it and all, you know, for right now, and you never know what's going to happen in the future. But no, I, I don't see that again. The captain's going to be running the day-to-day. It's just, I'm more of a support in making sure we have everything we need, HR-wise, and make sure the city is put in the best light. It'd be a liaison officer for me to go back in case, you know, just like with COVID, and we had meetings, and people were like, you know, I don't see lifeguards doing this, I don't see that. And so I can sit there and answer some of those questions for the general public and you as commissioners and all. So I don't know if I answered your question, but again, and we'll be able to, it's really behind the scenes where you will see me doing the work.
Thank you, Chief. That's the end of my questioning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, I also want to thank Commissioner Gossett for his efforts, and Glenn for his efforts at the beginning, to be able to combine this into one document. It makes absolute sense to me that when we seek a sponsor in the state legislature and present this to the legislators for a charter change, that we would want to do a complete update on the entire section, rather than do it piecemeal. I do want us to be mindful of that, by my reading of it, that what we're doing is to allow the city manager to delegate super authority to whoever they want. The city manager can, can delegate to an assistant city manager, or the police, or whatever. It's broad, it's generic. And of course, we know the direction she wants to go, and so be it. You know, I intimated at the beginning that charters are somewhat sacred, and they deserve an extra weight, weighted discussions to be able to go forward. And, you know, we have had charter changes in the past for good reason, and I believe that these also have good reasons for these proposed changes. In the past, we've had charter changes in what areas, Glenn? Do you recall?
Sure, Mayor. The most recent one that I recall is a pretty extensive one on election issues. We did one that was clarified, the one-person, one-vote rule, clarified how we would purge the voter registration list, included a definition of domicile in that one. You also did, the commissioners also did a charter change within the last five years to allow the implementation of a lodging tax. I recall, based upon some litigation a few years before that, there was a question about the durational residency requirement, how long you have to require somebody to own in town before they could register to vote. That was changed based upon some evolving case law. Around the time that this city hall complex was being considered, there was a charter change to raise the borrowing debt, or the borrowing limit, so that clients could be borrowed to do it. So those, those are probably within the last five to seven years that I can recall.
That's fine. Do you recall who sponsored any or all of those, by any chance?
I don't know about all of them. I know, I know that, you know, Speaker Swartzkopf was involved in, in most of them. I tend to think that Marini Lopez, Senator Lopez did a fair amount of them as well.
Thank you very much. Very good. Thank you. Sorry for the pause. Are there any more questions? If not, I want to go to members of the public. Did Carol Everhart come on board?
Yes, she has.
All right. Walter Brittingham?
Good afternoon.
You're good, thank you.
Very nice rewrite to what you had attached as documentation to the agenda today. Nice job to Mr. Mendelis and to Mr. Gossett.
Thank you, Walter. Mr. Glass, Gary?
Yes, I have a few things to say. I don't agree with the change to the charter. I don't believe it's just updating the charter, as Patrick Gossett has explained. It was precipitated, in my opinion, as a member of the public, because of a situation involving the past captain of the Beach Patrol. I think that the way in which the city management, under the direction of Sharon Lynn and Glenn Mendelis, handled this was wrong, and I think it was disrespectful to a person who had spent over 30 years of their life serving our city. I think he deserved an opportunity to explain to the public why he was treated the way he was treated. We have no idea. This is an action to hide the way in which the city manager and other members of the city government handled whatever the situation was with the Beach Patrol captain. Without going into any more of that, I disagree with this charter change. It's not an updating of the records, it's not housekeeping, it's an action taken because of a situation that I believe was not handled properly. I would like to call your attention to accountability. Each commissioner should be accountable for this action of change, and hold the city manager accountable for the management of this city. I don't think the Beach Patrol is going to run as well as it did the previous years. And we are heading into a summer in which we have a VIP in our town that can cause us to have situations that we've never had before. We could have protests, we just saw what happened in Washington DC. And yet, we're going to be so spread thin without experienced captains to run the Department of the Beach Patrol, that we are going to be having a very difficult time possibly. Lives can be at risk. This was a captain that was very experienced. He recruited even during the offseason when he wasn't being paid. He trained these people, they did more life-saving than they did a police function. If anything, they should belong under the fire department supervision and life-saving. They probably worked more directly with the life-saving function and helping people who were injured than they do work with enforcing the law in our city. I don't believe it belongs under the Police Department. I don't know why you couldn't work out an employee problem. Morale in this city's employment force is going to suffer greatly. We have seen changes throughout this government. We have a new building inspector, we have new people in the sewer department, we have new people in the water department. I believe the city manager is vertically integrating the management of this city at a cost that the taxpayers at some point are going to say enough is enough. We need to focus on operating and not having so many managers managing managers in this city. I don't know where we're going with this organizational management, but the costs are going up, and the contract services are going up, and legal costs are going up. We really need to look at what the city manager is doing with the budget, and I'm going over the budget now. This is not going to make the budget any cheaper.
Gary, you're a little expansive there. Can you come to a conclusion, please?
I would close by saying, if you look at the Chief of Police magazine, Meridian, Michigan, and Bay City, Michigan, have both tried this approach and gone back to it being under the city manager. The chief himself said places have tried it and gone back in Delaware. I'm not sure this is the right time to be making this change. We should be sticking with a program that worked, and I didn't see anything wrong with the way the Beach Patrol worked. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. We all certainly have our opinions, don't we? You know, I heard that there are examples of towns that have the Beach Patrol under the police, and I'm satisfied. I happen to, I do want to share with you, since you've been so public, that I don't agree with you in anything you just said, including your rationale for saying it. With that, we'll go to Robert Whitzel. Did you come on?
He was not on the call.
Rob did not come on. If there's no more Commissioner comment, and we've exhausted public comment, I would like to say that the next step for us would be a formal vote to authorize the mayor to seek a sponsor for this charter change and to move forward. And so we'll do that in the future. If there's no more comments, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Thanks a lot.